A quorum being present, I call the meeting to order. All rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to our November 6, 2023 Acushnet Town Meeting. My name is Les Dacre, and I'm your town moderator. I've been informed that the warrant has been properly executed with return of service in accordance with our bylaws. I'd like to begin by having the head table introduce themselves, starting with this gentleman to my immediate left. Darren Klein, Town Council, KP Law.
Jamie Kelly, Town Administrator.
Kevin Gasper, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
David Wonar, Board of Selectmen.
Bob Hinckley, Board of Selectmen.
Mike Boucher, Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Sue Delgado, Vice Chair, Finance Committee.
Nick Montesello, Town Accountant.
And the individuals you see seated at the table just in front of the stage, one of the hottest working committees in town, the Finance Committee. We understand and appreciate you all have busy, demanding lives, and we thank you for the privilege of your time. Each and every one of you tonight will have the opportunity to question, comment, amend, modify, and ultimately approve or reject each article in this warrant. This is your meeting and your tax dollars. Your participation is not only encouraged, it's your absolute right. A few housekeeping items. Please note the center floor is reserved for registered voters in town only. Non-registered voters, visitors, observers are to be seated to the rear of the center floor or on the side bleachers and chairs. Each registered voter was presented with a pink card upon verification of voting status. Those cards will be the only means of voting tonight when raised to be counted. Kindly silence all your cellphones so as not to disturb the meeting. Please note the location of the emergency exit nearest you in the event we need to evacuate the building. And the restrooms are in the hallway to my right. I'll just briefly go through a process summary. I will not be reading every article verbatim, but will provide a summary of each. The full text is on the handouts provided to you when you entered. If you would like to speak on an article, line up at the microphone. Non-residents will not be allowed to speak unless they are department heads, town employees, or a majority of the registered voters agree to let them speak. When recognized by the moderator, clearly state your name and town address before speaking. You have the absolute right to understand what you are voting on. Articles are written to comply with the law, and the full intent of the article may not be clear to you, and it's probably not clear to others as well. Everyone here is entitled to question any aspect of an article, and we will address every question asked. Procedurally, all questions shall be directed through the moderator to maintain decorum and make efficient use of our time. You are to speak only to the motion at the moment. Rude or disrespectful speech will not be tolerated. Direct conversations between participants will only be allowed if it serves to answer important questions and is deemed to be beneficial to the meeting's efficiency. Please remember there is a distinct difference between questions and answers and debates. All may speak on a motion as many times as they like, but no one may speak twice, and to all who wish to speak have spoken once. I do reserve the right to limit discussion once we reach the onerous point of repetition. And without objection, I reserve the right to recess at any point. So let's get down into the business at hand. Article 1. Payment of prior year's bills to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,080.69 to pay for the following unpaid bills from the prior fiscal year or take any other action in relation thereto. Bill 1, Building Department. E. Carvigan, $175 for May and June electrical inspections. Bill 2, Building Department. Jim Marret, $120 for May and June building inspections. Bill 3, Building Department. Frank Knox, $2,430 April, May, and June electrical inspections. Bill 4, Police Department. Payroll, $1,035 for fiscal year '23 contractual sick buyback. Bill 5, Police. Office Technology Group. $112.61 fiscal year '23 copier overage. Bill 6, Police, Town Building. Joan Perkey, $70 for two inspection stickers. Bill 7, Selectmen. Cabot, $145.26 workers' comp claim. Bill 8, Technology. The Telecom Spot. IP phones for the EMS department. Bill 9, Park Department. The vendor is a town of Acushnet. for water bills for a total of $5,080.69. Now, this article is traditionally preserved or presented to settle prior year's bills that were received and/or processed after the end of the fiscal year. So to put it simply, these are goods and services that we received in the last fiscal year, but the bills were received this fiscal year. We need a 90% approval rating to approve this article, and if we don't get it, I will have to take a physical count. Is there a motion?
Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate from taxation the sum of $5,080.69 to pay for the following year unpaid bills from prior fiscal years.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, did I have a second? Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee voted, approved this article unanimously.
Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 1, please raise your pink card. Those opposed? Article 1 passes unanimously. Article 2. Amendments to the fiscal year '24 budget. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $89,676 to amend the appropriations stated below, previously voted in Article 27 of the May 22, 2023 Annual Town Meeting for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, or various town departments, or take any other action in relation thereto. Town accountant expenses. for professional and actuarial services. Line 914, group health and general insurance expense. for liability injured on duty and health insurance unemployment for a total of $89,676. In light of the late passage of the Commonwealth General Appropriation Act, this article will correct revenue, expense, and assessment budgets to reflect the changes in the actual state aid and assessment figures versus earlier staff estimates. The increase in group health and general insurance of $74,926 and the increase in town accountant professional and actuarial services of $14,750 are within the increase in state aid that was included in the Commonwealth's final budget passed in August. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate from taxation the sum of $89,676 and to amend the appropriations stated below that were previously voted in Article 27 of the May 22, 2023 Annual Town Meeting for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023 for various town departments. Line number 1135, finance expenses. $14,750 for actuarial services. Line item 1914 for insurance. Line item expenses. $74,926 for member increase for a total of $89,676.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends this article unanimously.
Open it up to discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 2, please raise your pink card. Those opposed? Article 2 passes unanimously. Article 3. Acceptance of a provision of the Omnibus Municipal Modernization Act. This is to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of the third sentence of Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 2A, Subsection A, which would change the certification timeframe of new growth from the calendar year to the town's fiscal year or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. This is presented to change the certification timeframe of new growth that correspond with the town's fiscal year, not the calendar year. This is recommended by the town accountant and the town's auditors. Two-thirds of the Commonwealth municipalities already have adopted this change. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to accept the provisions of the third sentence of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 2A, Subsection A, which would change the certification timeframe of new growth from the calendar year to the town's fiscal year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee voted to approve this article unanimously.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, just a point of information. This is referred to as the Omnibus Municipal Modernization Act. Ironically, it was passed in 1989. In 1991, Carver approved it, 1991. Rochester approved it. Freetown in '92, Taunton '93, Wareham 2003, Dartmouth 2004, Marion 2005, Dyton 2012, so on and so forth. We are one of the minority of towns that do not have this on the books.
Any further discussion? We'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 3, please raise your pink card. Those opposed? Article 3 passes unanimously. Article 4. Rescind prior ambulance borrowing. See if the town will vote to rescind the borrowing authority for the purchase of an EMS ambulance as authorized by Article 25 of the May 22, 2023 Annual Town Meeting or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. This is presented to rescind the prior authorization to borrow for an EMS ambulance. Borrowing is not necessary. There's adequate free cash to purchase the vehicle outright. As the town meeting may recall, the original authorization for the borrowing was a device to allow the town to order the vehicle. The original intent of the board, as discussed at the town meeting, was to rescind the borrowing and purchase the vehicle with free cash. Do I have a motion?
Moderator, I move the town vote to rescind the borrowing authority for the purchase and equipment of an advanced life support ambulance for the Acushnet Fire EMS Department as authorized in Article 25, 25th, 25 of the May 22, 2023 Annual Town Meeting in the amount of $610,000.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends this article unanimously.
Discussion? Anyone?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Gasper.
Just so everybody knows, I know you touched on it for a point, but the next article, we're actually going to be buying the ambulance out of free cash and not doing a borrowing, which a borrowing, when people use the word in government, a borrowing, it really means debt exclusion. What debt exclusion means is your taxes are going higher. So by the Board of Selectmen, in the Finance Committee, in the town's financial team, with the town administrator, we've decided to use free cash to buy it outright so the town doesn't have to do a debt exclusion and prematurely raise your taxes, as we've done in numerous cases in the past. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Is there any further discussion? Sir, if you'd like to speak, please approach the mic. Give us your name and town address, please.
24 Main Street, Jose Roman. Just wondering where free cash is from. What fund does free cash come from?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the town meeting. Free cash is certified by the state from past appropriations or money that has not been appropriated but collected by the town and sits for a year and then comes back certified. It's composed of the variance in the actual receipts versus the estimated receipt, variance in the state aid, share sheet variances, and some unexpended appropriations.
Good evening, Anita Davis, 1528 Main Street, Peter Benoit. Hello. So, my question is about free cash. Did not this money, this is a question, come not from the crisis that happened with opiates? Did the town not receive money from Purdue Pharmaceuticals?
So I'll answer that question for you, Ms. Davis. Absolutely, and there's an article here to buy some equipment for EMS in the amount of $80,000 from that settlement.
Okay. Can we ask where the rest of the money went? Because I understand it was a million dollars. Is that true or false?
False.
Okay. So is there any money going to drug or alcohol education in our schools? Because the money came from a pharmaceutical company, right? That kills people with opiates.
Correct.
I was wondering if there was any money allocated for drug education in our schools.
I'm not particularly aware of that.
No, because it's not available. And I would like to know if you could make some of that money available to the schools for education, to be educated so our children will know the difference, what is a drug and what is not a drug? What is a drug, what is not a drug? Is alcohol a drug? Is marijuana a drug? We need to educate our young people with this money. I mean, an ambulance is very important. I get it. I'm at that age where I've needed it several times. And I'm very grateful to the committees all involved, financial. You know, I've been accused of not participating in government. Well, I'm participating now, so here I am. I'm Anita Davis, and I am on social media, and I'm here tonight to participate in my government.
So the next article's for cardiac monitors for that $80,000.
Mr. Moderator. With regards to Ms. Davis's comments, as a parent, I take the responsibility upon myself to educate my child when it comes to that issue. I don't think it should be solely dependent on the school system for that.
Moderator?
Please.
Thomas Farland, Fire Chief. I also reside at 9 Ludlow Street in Acushnet. To answer Ms. Davis's question through you, working with the town administration, finance, and with Chief Richmond and Officer Cathcart, who's the school resource officer, there will be some education from that fund coming. We're working on putting together a program, so you will see that in the future. To date, we've only received just over $80,000 from that settlement. It comes in in installments yearly. So we'll be using future funds to be able to build that program and enhance the education.
Thank you, sir.
Moderator, Sandra Liger, 27 Main. Just a point of information for contact. What is our total free cash? I don't know how to interpret this money. If this is a little, if this is a lot, can I please have the total free cash available to the town?
I don't have that number in front of me, but I believe the number was somewhere around 1.5 million.
Yep, it's $1,563,231.
This is roughly half of our free cash?
A bit less, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? If not, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 4, to rescind the prior ambulance borrowing and pay from cash? You've already raised your pink cards. Those opposed? Article 4 passes unanimously. Article 5 deals with capital expenses. To see if the town will vote to appropriate a transfer from free cash to the sum of $729,849 for the capital projects listed below and anything incidental or related thereto, including but not limited to the purpose and installation of equipment and supplies, or take any other action in relation thereto. Fire EMS Department. Ambulance purchase and upfitting. All these, the source for all of these line items are free cash, the $610,000 we just talked about. Fire EMS for the Fire Chief's vehicle. It will either be a Dodge Durango or Chevy Tahoe. $63,000. Selectmen to close out the lease on two Chevy Bolts. Council on Aging. Purchase a Chrysler Voyager for $15,721 for the total of $729,849. This article is presented to provide funding from certified free cash for the capital costs involved in closing out the electric cars, purchasing and outfitting an EMS ambulance, replacing the Fire Chief's 11-year-old vehicle. It's a 2012 model. And the purchasing of a Chrysler Voyager LX, side-entry minivan through the Mass. Department of Transportation Community Transit Grant Program. The town shared for this Voyager of $15,721 equals just 20% of the total purchase price of the vehicle. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator? Jesus. I move the town to vote to appropriate by a transfer from free cash the sum of $729,849 for the capital projects as identified below and anything incidental or related thereto, including but not limited to the purpose and installation of equipment and supplies. Fire and EMS, ambulance purchase and upfitting, $610,000. Fire and EMS, Fire Chief's vehicle and upfitting, $63,000. Selectmen, electric vehicle lease closeout, $41,128. COA, Chrysler Voyager grant match, $15,721 for a total of $729,849.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee voted to approve this article unanimously with one abstention.
Any discussion from the floor?
Hi, Phil Badham, 7 Reservoir Road. My question is on the lease closeouts and how old those vehicles are. And also, I'm not sure. Been trying to get an answer for a few years. This town has about five electric car chargers that were installed between five and 10 years ago that have never been turned on. There's one at the fire station, not the fire station, EMS, police, the library. They've literally been there eight, between five and eight years. None of them have ever been turned on. There's also, grant money was used from EverSource to put charging stations at the schools. Those were never installed either. Kind of curious what happened with that grant funding. And also, yeah, how old these vehicles are that were paying $41,000 to use.
Excuse me, Phil, could I get your address again?
7 Reservoir.
Thank you.
Anyone know what the age of these vehicles?
Mr. Moderator, I believe the two vehicles that are in question right now are three years old, perhaps four years old. The town has owned them since brand-new, well, have leased them since brand-new. One of them's under the Board of Health's jurisdiction. The other one, the Bolt, was under the Building Department's jurisdiction with a new building inspector using his own vehicle. Basically, it's his office, his vehicle, and he prefers to have that. We had a vehicle under conservation, which was a Nissan Leaf. Some criticize the wiring harness. The vehicle had some issues on its own. We decided to turn that vehicle back when the lease was up, and now we're looking to purchase the two vehicles. We turned over one of the Bolts to conservation in regards to the Leaf. And as far as the gentleman's question goes for the charging stations goes, sir, I don't have an answer for you, but I will absolutely get you an answer.
616 Main Street. I, some of the questions were just answered, but on the Fire Chief's vehicle, this is a new vehicle, are asked?
That is correct. It's a brand-new vehicle, and there's some money inside of that line. And for the $63,000, the request was for more. The Board of Selectmen made, I believe it was a $10,000 cut to it. There's some money inside of there because it's being purchased off the state bid list. So there's some money in there to retrofit it, put some lighting inside of it, and detail the vehicle to say Fire Chief, Acushnet, and all that stuff like we usually do for the vehicle. So there's some additional money inside of there for radios, lighting. And I guess they call it wrapping nowadays, where they wrap it and just put a Fire EMS chief or whatever the chief decides to have on that vehicle.
That $63,000 covered being done?
That is correct. It's a brand-new vehicle, Deb.
And we insure all these vehicles as well?
Now, we let them drive around without insurance just to see what's going to happen? Yes, absolutely, Deb. We absolutely insure all our vehicles. We try to do our best to keep track of them and insure them all, yes. But absolutely, all the vehicles will be.
Can I ask how many miles are on this vehicle? Can I ask how many miles are on this vehicle?
On the fire chief's current vehicle?
Yeah, many miles.
The fire chief's coming, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a swing at it because I think the last time we talked was roughly a hundred and ten thousand miles with some issues. So Chief, she wants to know how many miles are on it? I swung at one-ten.
You're in the ballpark. I believe one-oh-seven and chain. And the estimate on the repairs necessary are somewhere north of thousand dollars.
Good evening, Robert Rocha, twenty-nice lane. Point of clarification regarding the two electric vehicles. Did those come to us through a grant program? And if they did, was there another grant program to continue the lease so that we wouldn't have to buy them?
Mr. Rocha? I apologize, but I didn't hear, I didn't hear the question all the way to the end.
So clarify first that those vehicles came to us through a grant program, correct? And then was it, and now that the, I'm guessing that we're at the end of that first grant cycle, was there another grant program available where we could have completed the lease? You know, apply for that and then not, not have to pay for them?
I'm gonna refer that to the town accountant. Mr. Monticello?
So it was through the Green Communities Grant, and then they wouldn't let us, it had to be a new vehicle purchased in order to get more grant funding for that, so the town would be on the hook for the final cost of any existing vehicles.
And both of those, both of those electric vehicles have very low miles. I believe both of those electric vehicles are under five thousand miles currently.
Is there any other discussion?
Not to be a pain, but just learning how this goes. This is, seems to be like a really big chunk of money. I'm wondering, is something that we have to vote on as an altogether thing, or is there a way to divide it up? We may vote on the ambulance, that we may vote on fire chief's car. I don't know if it's possible. It just seems like this is a big thing, and maybe some people would say, well, I'm in for it for COA, but maybe I'm not in for it for the fire chief's vehicle. You know, is there a way that we?
Well, if you would like to make a motion to amend a portion of it, then we'd be open to it.
I can make a motion.
Make a motion to divide the article?
Divide the article.
Divide the question. Excuse me, one sec.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the town meeting. The ambulance purchase, now that the borrowing has been rescinded and we've ordered the ambulance, we have to keep the progress going on this. The fire chief's vehicle, we put in for, with the state bid list. If we do not go now with this, we might lose the lower cost and have to pay more. Mr. Monticello explained the electric cars, and we've already received the money from the Commonwealth for the COA vehicle, and this is our match, and we signed a contract with the Commonwealth to match the funds on the COA when we applied for the grant.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Selectmen, yes.
As you alluded to at the beginning of this town meeting, it's up to the people. So if the people decide that they want to split the article, then that's what we shall do, and we'll put each one up for a vote.
Moderator, Jose Roman once again. Wouldn't it make more sense to turn the leases in and get with the program again?
No, because you need to turn in a gas vehicle in exchange to be eligible for the electric vehicle by the lease. That's what we did originally. So the grant program, Mr. Monticello is probably a little bit better to speak on it, but just to give you an idea, the way the grant funding worked is you have to turn in a gas vehicle in exchange for an electric vehicle.
That sounds great. Why don't we turn in the chief's vehicle in?
Album drive an electric?
Excuse me, moderator? Excuse me, moderator? Is there a motion on the floor from Ms. Madeiras?
Ms. Madeiras, did you make the motion?
I know you made a motion, but I wasn't exactly clear what that motion was. Okay.
She asked, she asked it in the form of a question, and then we kind of got going, but I understood exactly what she was saying, and there is a way to do it, to answer her question. So that's what we're in the process of trying to get to, I guess.
Is your motion, Ms. Madeiras, to divide the question? And that would entail considering each funding request separately. Does everyone understand what Ms. Madeiras's motion is? Is there a second? What's that?
Yes.
This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of dividing the question, please raise your card. The motion passes to divide the question. We will now take these item by item.
I have a quick question. What did the Finance Committee not recommend? They had a split?
There was one abstention.
All those in favor of the ambulance purchase and upfitting for six hundred and ten thousand dollars, please raise your card. Those opposed? The ambulance passes unanimously. All those in favor of sixty-three thousand dollars for the fire chief's vehicle, please raise your card. Those opposed? Purchase of the chief's vehicle passes. I won't take it, you can, you can approach at any time. We're in the middle of dividing the questions.
I would like to determine how I'm going to vote by this question. I'm going to ask you if you will.
Please identify yourself, sir.
Rockliff, Gary, seventy-four Swamp Street, or you can call it Mecca Way. The Chevy Bolts, if we turn them back in and just to pay nothing, we just don't have them anymore, nobody else can use them. Does our statutes under the Green Communities Act, is any of that going to be put in jeopardy? Okay, if, it's contentious, I get it. Some people probably are, are in favor of an electric car, some people probably aren't. I just want to know if any harm is going to be done to the town if we reject the electric car?
I would ask the town accountant.
Oh, no, we would, we would just trade them in, wouldn't have to pay a lease payment anymore. The way it's set up currently is we're just paying them monthly for the remainder of the lease. So we decided not to, we would just trade them back in. There's no, and yes, no, we would still be Green Communities.
Okay, now we'll bring the Chevy.
Would that leave?
Please identify yourself, sir.
Dave DeViggen, thirty-three, Ants, White Drive. Would that leave town employees short? We were not to re-up?
It would. And I just told the audience, town meeting members, that one of the vehicles is the Board, the health agents, and one of the vehicles is conservation agent's vehicle. We returned the Leaf, the Nissan Leaf, because it had issues. The building inspector had possession of one of the Bolts. That, the new building inspector says, I have no use for that Bolt. So we decided, the Board of Selectmen decided to turn in the Leaf. It wasn't really that great of a car. And it had some other issues going on with it. We turned that one back in and got rid of that one off the books, and we decided to keep the two Bolts because they have less miles, and they're in much better condition. And we turned over one of the Bolts to the Conservation Department. That's where the two uses are right now.
Article doesn't pass, what's the alternative for the employees that use? Do we have other vehicles that we could use?
There's one other vehicle, it's a gas vehicle, but from what I know, there's other employees that happen to use that vehicle. So, yeah, it would turn into a little bit of a you-know-what show amongst our employees, and it would then result in the town paying mileage to those individuals when they use
Just try and understand the mileage.
Please identify yourself, sir.
Jose Roman, once again, I'm sorry. What do we pay out for mileage? Would that be more considerate than getting into another forty-one thousand loan for vehicles?
We pay the federal rate, which is sixty-five point five cents a mile.
Conflin, one-seventy-five, MacCoys Road. Where would the money come from to pay that mileage?
The mileage payments would come out of the operating budget of the departments, and that would most likely go to raise and appropriate through taxation because we don't use free cash for the operating budget.
Moderator, Gary Rockliff, seventy-four, Mecca Way. If we turn down your electric car, we're banking forty-one thousand dollars, which will be free cash, which we can refund your appropriations for mileage.
Mr. Rockliff, it's already free cash.
If you run short when we come to the next town meeting, you can ask to get free cash to pay for all the mileage that everybody's going to drive. Every ten miles is six dollars and fifty cents.
The Board of Selectmen would have to rescind the policy of using free cash for an operating budget. It's not allowed.
Okay, folks, I don't know about you, but I've had enough. Let's put this to a vote. All those in favor of closing out the lease for the two Chevy Bolts, forty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars, please raise your card. Those opposed? I think we're going to need to count this one. Okay, let's, one take one side, one take the other. Everyone in favor of closing out the lease, please raise your card. Keep your cards up, ladies and gentlemen, until they've been counted. This is for those in favor of appropriating a forty-one thousand, one twenty-eight from Twenty-six and forty-one. Okay, everyone opposed to the forty-one, one twenty-eight to close out the leases. Forty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight to close out the leases passes by a margin of sixty-seven to fifty-one. Next, the Council on Aging Chrysler Voyager, fifteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars. That was offset by eighty percent by a grant. So the town's only paying twenty percent of the cost of that vehicle. All those in favor of purchasing the Council on Aging? Those opposed? The purchase of the Chrysler Voyager passes. So in summary, after division of the question, all of these capital expenses have been approved for a total of seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. Article Six. Cardiac monitors. See if the town will vote to appropriate eighty thousand dollars from free cash, which was the amount the town received from the opioid settlement funds and transferred to free cash, and twelve thousand dollars from the ambulance reserve fund for a total of ninety-two thousand dollars to purchase cardiac monitors. AEDs, automated external defibrillators for the fire department, or take any other action thereon or in relation to do. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate by a transfer from free cash to the sum of eighty thousand dollars, and transfer the sum of twelve thousand dollars from the ambulance reserve funds for a total of ninety-two thousand dollars to purchase cardiac monitors for the fire department.
We'll have a second. Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommended this article unanimously.
Discussion.
Hello, Sandra Liger, twenty-seven Maine. I just have a few questions. Might you understand or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto that they can buy two AEDs or whatever they want?
Tom Council will answer that one.
Good evening, Darren Klein, KPLA. That's in the article. The, that's how the article is written, but it, you're actually voting on the motion, That's how the article is written, but you're actually voting on the motion, not the article. And the motion is more specific. It doesn't have that general or relation thereto in it.
Can you read the motion?
The motion, I can read the motion again, Mr. Selectman Mona.
Because when you just read it, you did include those words.
The moderator read the article, but you're actually voting on the specific. So basically, every motion has to be within the four corners of the article, but you're actually voting on the specific motion. And I'm sure one of the board members will reread.
I'm gonna read it again for you.
Please.
I move the town vote to appropriate by a transfer from free cash the sum of eighty thousand dollars and transfer the sum of twelve, sum of twelve thousand dollars from the ambulance reserve funds for a total of ninety-two thousand dollars to purchase cardiac monitors for the fire department.
If I may, did the ambulance, our EMTs, our fire department ask for these things? Did they come to finance asking for these things? Or are we assuming we need them or want them? It was a request? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And just, and you raised the question earlier on, Sandra, of free cash. So this is an example of where the town received opioid money in a settlement. That money has to go somewhere. Where it goes is into free cash. It's a one-time thing. You won't see that again unless we get another settlement in the future. But this is where it went into that piggy bank called free cash. And that's where it's coming out of. And the remaining twelve thousand dollars is coming from the fire department's budget in what they call an EMS reserve receipt account.
Mr. Moderator? Just so the fire chief won't have to get up again. The units that we're replacing were bought in two thousand thirteen. They have a ten-year lifespan. And it's time to replace them.
This is the same device that saved DeMar Hamlin's life last year, the Buffalo Bills player on the field in Cincinnati. Any other discussion? We'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article six? Those opposed? Article six passes unanimously. Article seven, capital expense stabilization fund. See if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of a hundred thousand dollars to the capital expense stabilization fund or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. According to municipal finance best practices, the town will add a hundred thousand dollars to the capital expense infrastructure stabilization fund to defray future infrastructure, repair, renovation, and construction costs, as well as engineering and planning expenses. With this transfer, the capital expense fund, stabilization fund, will be at nine hundred and seventy-one thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars and two cents, assisting the town in maintaining its bond rating and showing financial responsibility and stability to bond and credit rating agencies. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer of free cash to the sum of a hundred thousand dollars to further fund the capital expense stabilization fund.
I have a second. Finance committee recommendation.
Finance committee voted to approve this article unanimously.
Discussion from the floor. Do you know discussion will put it to a vote? All those in favor of Article seven, please raise your card. Those opposed? Article seven passes unanimously. Article eight, OPEB trust fund. Excuse me. OPEB stands for Other Post Employee Benefits. To see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of two hundred thousand dollars to the OPEB trust account or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. The town has a trust account for expenses related to retiree health insurance costs. Again, it was created to enable the town to adopt best practices and comply with reporting requirements of GASB forty-five. GASB stands for the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. This continues funding and permits monies to be invested and solely utilized or payments to defray the cost of the town's OPEB liabilities. Town benefits from having this trust fund as it shows financial responsibility and stability to bond and credit rating agencies and reduces the future fiscal impact of pay-as-you-go systems on the operating budget. With this transfer, the balance in the fund is one million, two hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-three cents. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer from free cash to the sum of two hundred thousand dollars to further fund the OPEB trust fund.
I have a second. Finance committee recommendation.
Finance committee recommended this article unanimously.
Discussion.
Moderator, Guy Rockliff, seventy-four, Mecca Way. What's our obligation to fully fund it? Do we know? To be twelve million? I don't know what it is.
From my understanding and prior service to the town, it's significant, but I'll turn that over to the accounting or the town.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I was a crack at this one too, right? So you're right, Mr. Rockliff, it's a moving target. Depends on what actuary does the work and what year you're in. Sometimes it's ten million, sometimes it's twelve million. The last time, I think we were up over fifteen million dollars. I don't know how the millions keep compounding as fast as it is, but that's what the actuaries do. If the town of Cohen wants to touch base on what I just said and make any corrections if I was wrong, please feel free.
I was right. I think, yeah, it's up around eighteen million now.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moderator? Part of the reason why municipalities need this is because the state has such pension system and the political leaders in the state refuse to take up pension reform. So we have to take it upon ourselves to make sure that we can fund certain parts of post-employee's retirement. And this specifically refers to healthcare.
Are there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article eight, please raise your card. Those opposed? Article eight passes unanimously. Article nine, Community Preservation Act, Lake Street. See if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate the sum of seventy-five thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Act's undesignated fund balance as a supplemental appropriation to Article thirteen from the November fourteen, two thousand twenty fall special town meeting or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. This supplements the funds needed to continue with the weed remediation and other improvements at the Lake Street Recreation Area. With this, the current balances of the CPC funds are as follows. Open space, forty-eight thousand eighty-three dollars. Historic preservation, fifty-seven thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars. Community housing, a hundred and one thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars. And the undesignated fund balance of four hundred and ninety-four thousand six hundred and seventy dollars for a total of seven hundred and two thousand sixty-two dollars. These funds result from a community-wide annual surcharge of one and a half percent on property tax bills. It's not on the assessed value. And this is matched on a varying basis from year to year from the state. For instance, I just took it upon myself to make an example here. If your property is assessed at four hundred thousand dollars, the residential tax rate is twelve dollars per thousand. So your tax would be four thousand eight hundred dollars on that piece of property. The CPC rate, the one and a half percent, is applied to the four thousand eight hundred. So your share would be seventy-two dollars a year towards this fund. And it equates to twenty cents a day. I hope that helps. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town transfer from the Community Preservation Act Fund undesignated balance an amount of seventy-five thousand dollars for the purpose of supplementing the appropriation to Article thirteen from the November fourteenth, two thousand twenty fall special town meeting for the purposes of preservation, rehabilitation, and/or restoration through improvements and cleaning efforts in the Lake Street lakes and adjacent recreational grounds for recreational and open space purposes.
I have a second. Finance committee recommendation.
Finance committee voted to approve this article unanimously.
Any discussion from the floor?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
While the article and the motion speak for itself, just to give you a little background, it's the intent of the Lake Street Committee to remediate the weeds. As you know, we've been working on a proposal. We had one that would look to treat it chemically, and that wasn't a good idea. And so we scrapped that. Now we're looking at an aquatic rake, which, you know, would be less aggressive, more environmentally friendly. And we hope to work with the Conservation Commission on that. But as part of the process, we have to, we plan to contract with the company, but we have to encumber the funds in order to do that. And then we would jointly submit a notice of intent to the Conservation Commission. But it's our goal is to get rid of all of the weeds on Lake Street. In addition to that, if there's money left over, plan would be to add further safety improvements with guardrails up Lake Street further from where they are now. I don't know how many of you have been there, but if you like the lighting that you've seen there and some of those improvements, it's to continue that momentum for that jewel that we have in the town.
Are there any other discussion?
I'm having kept up on this. You're talking about the weeds in the water that everybody complains about, not on land?
No, I, yes, in the water.
I was going to say, there's many homeowners in town who could come together and show up with our little goadies and clean up Lake Street. There are things the community could do in terms of weed control that are natural and very centric to our town. So I would hope you all look for those opportunities in the future. They can't swim, so we can't help you.
Yes, thank you. We have done a cleanup and will, any volunteers, whether it's organized or unorganized, feel free to stop by and see something, clean it up, absolutely.
Moderator is in the back room. Douglas Thomas, twenty-five, South Main Street. The seventy-five thousand dollars, is this included with the cleanup, the removal, the disposal of the weeds?
That would be part of that, yes, Doug.
Part of it? Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Let's put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article nine? Those opposed? Article nine passes unanimously. Article ten, golf course capital expenses. See if the town will vote to transfer from the golf course retained earnings, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of various capital repair and replacement projects, including but not limited to irrigation system repairs, replacements, cut path repairs, replacement of equipment, and expenditures by golf management committee and board of selectmen or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Moderator, I move the town transfer from the golf course retained earnings fund amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of various replacements, cop repairs, replacement of equipment and expenditures as approved by the management committee and the board of selectmen.
I have a second.
Second.
Finance committee recommendation.
Finance committee recommended this article unanimously.
This is Main Street. I'm just asking what the, we have an idea of what the profit made at the golf this year. The profit. Because we're supposedly taking retained earnings. I'm assuming that must mean money that we've made in the golf being open. So how much money did we make in total this year that we're asking for the hundred and twenty-five thousand? I'm just wondering what.
Mr. Moderator? To answer your question with regards to profit of the golf course, I had a conversation with the chair of the golf committee sometime last week, and he indicated to myself that it was close to three hundred thousand dollars after they paid their bond.
Davis, fifteen, twenty-eight, Main Street of Cusnet. This is a personal question to the board. How many of you all play golf?
I do, but I'm not very good at it, so I don't do it as much as I could.
I used to, but I haven't played in probably about seven years.
Can I ask the crowd, how many of you all?
Excuse me, Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Davis, please limit your questions and comments to the attributes of this article or the lack thereof.
A hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for capital repair replacement project on a golf course that most of us have never seen, never been there, right? So it's for the elite few. I think that's a lot of money for us to vote on, a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Selectman Gaspard.
To try to put a little clarity and shine a little light on it, Ms. Davis, the golf is considered a golf enterprise fund. It's not taken from taxation. So this is from user fees. So it's an enterprise fund. There's no dollars coming from taxation. And I've been very critical of the golf course in the committee and the folks that are there. If you watch a previous selectments meeting, I said their cash burn rate is roughly a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars in the last three years on top of all their expenditures in their budget. So the board of selectmen have a good eye on what's going on. We do need to make improvements at the golf course to keep it in the condition that it's in and keep operations going so they can remain profitable. And we do have a considerable amount of work to do because in the first ten or fifteen years, there wasn't a lot being done. And now we're playing a little bit of catch-up. So I've been very critical of the golf course and how they're expending their money. And this article was for the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it wasn't until I spoke on this article at a selectments meeting when we were reviewing the warrant to reduce it to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars because they have a remaining hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in old article money, plus a hundred thousand dollars of reserve inside their budget that has to be approved through the board of selectmen. So all in all, they said their near-term expenses come out to three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. That gives them four hundred and six thousand dollars available to them with a hundred and twenty-five, not the two hundred and fifty. So the board of selectmen have done their job, along with the finance committee, to reduce articles when we see fit.
Wow, what a memory. You've got a great memory on numbers. Toronto, good job.
Mr. Moderator, to follow up Selectman Gaspard's response, the golf course is an actual gem for this town, and it's gonna be paid off in a little over four years. So once that happens, it's gonna be a steady revenue stream coming into the town, which some of the money will probably go back into the golf course, but there'll also be remaining funds that can go back to the town. So it's gonna be a great asset for the town for a long time. It's a great source of recreation for many people, for those who golf, and I highly recommend this article.
Keepin' on, twenty-nine, Gabriel Farm Drive of Cusnet, Finance Committee. Just to reiterate, it is an enterprise fund, which means the money that they're looking for is not coming out of taxation, correct?
Correct.
The money that's in the golf enterprise fund that they're looking to reallocate is not money that the town can use elsewhere, correct?
That is correct.
The chairman of the Finance Committee, Michael, had already said it's a little over four years till it's paid off. What is our bond payment annually, roughly?
Roughly three hundred and some odd thousand dollars. We lowered it, the board of selectmen several years back, I don't know when it was, I'll call it five or seven years ago, the board of selectmen rebonded the golf course because of the turmoil in the economy. Let's call it that. And we were a bit cautious about making that bond payment in excess of five hundred and some odd thousand dollars. So the town had the ability to go out and rebond and extend the bond over five or seven more years to its fullest extent to lower the bond borrowing down to roughly three hundred and change. the bond borrowing down to roughly three-hundred and change. It might be like three and a quarter, somewhere around there. So we reduced that bond payment by a couple of hundred thousand dollars by doing that, just to make sure that if, you know, it hit the fan, we wouldn't, this, this golf course, in my eyes, would never fall back on the taxpayers' back. And that's the action that the board of selectmen took, along with FinCon and the finance team back then, to make sure that didn't occur, and it did not occur. And actually, the golf course is thriving, and it has a pretty good surplus. We just need to make sure as a town and as town residents that we keep a good eye on the expenditures as we have been doing. So thank you.
Just further details on the golf course. It is practically sold out year-round, correct?
I don't know about all the time sold out, but I know that when the weather's nice, yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty much sold out, especially the weekends.
I think we've done like thirty-five thousand rounds.
So last year, we made three-hundred thousand dollars on top of being able to pay off the bond. It's going to be paid off for, in about another four, four and a half years. It's green space for the town that's not going to be built on that's out there. And contrary to what Ms. Davis would like people to believe, I would say ninety percent of the people that play golf on that course are coming from out of our town, bringing revenue stream into this town, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Phil Adams, seven Raswell Road. Not to repeat what he just said, but the golf course is making a six-figure profit basically every year. We have, what, a million, million and a half in reserve fund for them?
Somewhere there about. I don't, I don't, Mr. One, so is it one point five? So right around there, yeah.
So the bonds are coming off in the next four years, five years, and they're operating out of a trail of them that was bought used, I believe, when the course was built in nineteen-ninety-eight. So coming up on twenty-five, twenty-five years, they've been operating in a trail that's falling apart. When are we going to reinvest capital into the course to give them the amenities that they need? Are we going to have another, another bond come to pay for that?
Well, that's the whole reason why, you know, I've been a fiscal hawk on the golf course, right? Is we, we look at what we generated over COVID is really where we, they built surplus up pretty exponentially. And I was down there having a conversation with Dana, Director of Golf, and Mr. Tibbles, Superintendent of Maintenance, I don't know, six, seven, eight months ago, whenever it was. And I went in there and I looked and I had a conversation with Dana, and I said, this is totally unacceptable, and it's not his fault that the building's falling apart. But I've had some conversations with a few of the committee members, and I said, it's time to act and do something now because technically, if we build a clubhouse, people like myself that don't golf might go down here because friends are golfing. And if we had like a little bar area and we served actually some kind of food, maybe a lot of us residents, instead of going out of town for a bite to eat and have a drink, maybe we just show up at the golf course and we make even more money. So I've broken down all the food, food and beverage line items with Mr. Prevaluski. He's actually here in the audience. And I did some calculations, probably well over a decade ago, saying if we got our food and beverage to ten dollars per round, we generate another two-hundred thousand dollars in revenue every year. So clearly, we're capable of doing that. We just got to let the rain, the reins loose and start being a little bit more creative in government and how we can generate more revenue. Because the more revenue we generate, the better the town's going to prosper. And we do have an agreement, I think in the original agreement with that farmland protection thing that we did, that we can actually take money from their surplus and buy ourselves things like ambulances, fire engines, police cars, things of the like. So, you know, the future could be bright as long as we have the right people guiding the direction of the town.
You said, I believe it's missed revenue. And honestly, it's kind of an embarrassment. It's a phenomenal golf course, but the amenities are completely embarrassing.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to add one more thing, just for the, so the residents know, even for the non-golfers out there, you can actually enjoy the golf course on non-golfing time and walk the paths. You can jog there. It's a safe place to walk and jog when the golfers aren't out there golfing. So you can still get good use out of it for the people who don't golf.
John Abere, ten Leguere Street. I am on the golf committee. First off, I'd like to say that this gentleman just repeated, the golf course is open to the public. It can be used to walk on. In the wintertime or when it's not snow out there, even when there is snow, there are people that do walk that course. The amount of rounds we go through is between thirty and thirty-eight thousand rounds a year. That's a lot of golf. I've been in, playing golf since I've been six. So there's a lot going on out there that people don't realize what the upkeep of that whole situation is and how this course and this committee and the selectmen help generate and bring more people into this. It's only a plus-plus situation. We've had a few, not bad years, but not real great years. But the last ten years have been very good. And I, I hope that people do get that opportunity to see what's going on out there. Thanks.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, let's put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article Ten, please raise your cards. Those opposed? Article Ten passes with opposition. Article Eleven, this is a zoning bylaw article. It will require a two-thirds vote to pass. This is regards to a special permit time limit. See if the town will vote to amend the Cushinget zoning bylaws, section three dot four, special permit requirements, Article Eight zoning of the general code, which was accepted by the town meeting April twenty-second, nineteen-ninety-six, and most recently amended December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, by inserting the following text after the second sentence. A special permit lapses, if not exercised, within two years from the date of the grant thereof. The special permit may be extended by the special permit granting authority for good cause shown for up to two years. And simply stated, it's presented to return the time limits for special permits to two years from three years. The change in time limits was instituted by the general court. The town has an option to return the limit to two years. It has been requested by town boards that issue special permits. This also allows flexibility in granting extensions for less than two years and not just two years. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to amend section three point four, special permit requirements of Article Eight of the general code, the Cushinget zoning bylaw concerning the time limits for special permits by inserting the following text after the second sentence. A special permit lapses, if not exercised, within two years from the date of the grant thereof. The special permit may be extended by the special permit granting authority for good cause shown for up to two years.
I have a second.
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee voted to approve this article unanimously.
I have a letter here from the planning board, but I see that, do we have any discussion from the planning board? Yeah?
Mark Francois, three oh one Perry Hill Road, Chairman of the Planning Board. The Planning Board voted unanimously. Recommend this.
Thank you, sir. Is there any discussion?
For COVID, all articles, all special permits, two years. Sometime during COVID or just after COVID, they changed it from two years to three years. And any renewal of that permit would go to three years. We chose bringing the permit back two years. When we, when somebody comes in for an extension, we have the choice between next month, year, up. We just thought three years.
It's me. Mark, could I just clarify the vote from the planning board?
It was unanimous, five zero.
The letter I have here states four and one abstention.
That for the next article.
What I have says Article Eleven. Okay, so we need to get that corrected. Okay, thank you very much.
Is there any other discussion? We'll put it to a vote. This has to have a third, two-thirds approval for adoption. It's to reduce the time limit for special permit from three years to two years. All those in favor of Article Eleven? Those opposed? Article Eleven passes unanimously. Article Twelve, special residential development over fifty-five zoning bylaw amendment. See if the town will vote to amend Article Eight zoning bylaw of the general bylaws by deleting in section three dot three dot one B, paragraph seven, the words for the elderly fifty-five years and older, or as in the sentence, multifamily housing for the elderly fifty-five years and older, as allowed under Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-B, and deleting in section three dot three dot four, paragraph B six, the words for the elderly fifty-five years and older, or as in the sentence, multifamily housing for the elderly fifty-five years and older, as allowed under Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-B, and adding a new section, three dot three dot seven, special residential development over fifty-five housing listed below, or take any other action in relation thereto. This article will add a new section to the zoning bylaw, which allows by special permit over fifty-five development in all zones but the business village and industrial zones. Residency is restricted to residents over fifty-five years of age. It will provide an opportunity for the development of senior housing without using Chapter Forty-B. It will also provide the consideration of the character of the area of the town while recognizing design standards. It recognizes areas that have access to municipal sewer and water may have different density from areas that do not have access to municipal sewer and water. The concerns of neighbors and abudders will be protected by the special permit process, which provides for advertised public hearings and multiple town boards input. You have all the details with you in the handout. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the, the town vote to amend Article Eight, the zoning bylaw of, zoning bylaw of the general bylaws by deleting one in section three point three point one B subsection seven, the words for the elderly fifty-five years and older, or as in the sentence, multifamily housing for the eld, for the elderly, by striking for the elderly fifty-five years and older, as allowed under Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-B, and in section, and two, in section three point three point four B subsection six, the words for the elderly fifty-five years and older, as in the sentence, multifamily housing, striking for the elderly fifty-five years and older, as allowed under Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-B, and adding a new section, section three point three dot seven, special residential development over fifty-five housing, as printed in the warrant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommended this article unanimously. We took into consideration the amount of time spent by the planning board with this article. I had the opportunity to watch several of their meetings, and there was a lot of time and effort put into this. And even though this is not a direct spending article, the Finance Committee still wanted to make a recommendation on this because we felt that there's a lot of safeguards put into this article to protect the town in the future. As a newly fifty-five-year-old, I'm in favor of this as well. So we recommend this article unanimously.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Yes, Selectman Gaspin.
I move to amend the article as printed in the warrant by striking in section D, P just three, reports from town boards and agencies, line five, the word surveill, and inserting in its place the word.
Thank you. Do you have a copy of that, sir? The motion right now is to amend this article as Selectman Gaspin mentioned. If you refer in, in section D, Procedures Three, Reports From The Town Boards Or Agencies, line five.
Second.
Sorry? Oh. The word surveill and inserting in its place the word superintendent. This is a majority vote to approve this amendment. All those in favor? Those opposed? Amendment passes.
Mr. Moderator? To, to the people of the floor, I'd like to just provide some additional clarification context as to what we are trying to achieve here. As you can see from the original of what, what was on the books, currently there, right now, there is a fifty-five and older bylaw. It's not very detailed. It's one sentence. It gives a developer essentially any, you know, no rules of the road to do as they see fit, but they would then go before the zoning board of appeals. So no real clear-cut process for somebody. The goal of the town is, is twofold, really, is that we want to, we recognize we have an aging population. We have a number of people. I've heard it out on the campaign trail. I've knocked on doors. I've talked to people during my twenty-plus years of serving on the board of selectmen. People want to stay in town. They feel like, you know, they don't want the burden of, you know, maintaining a large lawn or a larger home. They would like to live in a situation that is contained and doesn't have a lot of requirements to, to maintain, you know, with their living. And this would provide an option for them. On the flip side, if you're opposed to this, this makes it really difficult for somebody to do something in town. There would be over ten boards who would have to oversee any proposal. It'd go before the planning board, board of selectmen, conservation, board of health, up and down pretty much every facet of town government. But most importantly, if you're in a butter of a proposed development, you have a say in that. And the, it puts all of the authority in the hands of town government and in the planning board, which I think is really attractive to those who might be opposed to something like this. I just asked that the source of truth is what you see before you in print, what you see at the meetings, what you see in the discussion. It's not on social media. The source, the source of truth is here right before you this evening in this proposed article.
Thank you, Mr. One. Before I open it up to discussion, I'd like to get the planning board's recommendation.
Mark Francois, three oh one Perry Hill Road, Chairman of the Planning Board. The Planning Board voted unanimously for, for in favor, one abstention to approve this article.
Thank you, sir.
Just a quick note. Mr. One, I said it very well. This is basically safeguard to make sure that once we're gone or anybody else is gone, somebody can't get a friend somewhere and sneak something through. These are just safeguards for the town. All this is.
Discussion.
Benoit, twenty-nine Gabriel Farm Drive and Finance Committee. Selectman and the planning director pretty much answered most of it, but a couple of follow-ups for it. Social media today, or actually this past week, has been going crazy, talking about how this article is trying to condition our, our town into more development. And in fact, is it safe to say, Selectman, that passing this article will make it harder to develop than it currently stands for that particular over fifty-five community?
Definitely put some safeguards in place. And I think it's, it's important for people to know what the rules of the road are. Absolutely.
One thing that nobody's talked about, but I, it's probably on the back of a lot of people's mind too, is with the South Coast rail extension going live fairly soon, we're going to see mind too, is with the South Coast rail extension going live fairly soon, we're going to see a lot more interest in this town because of its ability to get now to Boston easily. With the addition of the housing crisis that's constantly on the news, whether you're for the situation that is now or against it, it's not going to take away from the fact that they're going to be looking for housing opportunities. And currently, Acushnet does not have a lot of affordable or over 55 housing. So when this is going through and they're looking for new tracts to be developed, if we do not have this on the books, it opens our land to developers that are simply looking to fit possibly state requirements, or a developer that's getting a bid into a state in order to fix a housing requirement, to keep them from looking at our town without these safeguards in place and without the standards that we want to set. So to, I just want to make sure that we're all set. The information that was going out on the Acushnet website earlier, this is not to make it easier for developing our lands. This is for putting in more safeguards and more hoops, so to speak, for any developer that wants to take part in our town. Correct?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Moderator? Just a follow-up on Pete's comment. Just so the residents know, every single committee and board in this town, the meetings are televised on the Acushnet local cable channel and also on the Acushnet YouTube channel. So you can get an accurate source of information straight from the people involved in the town who volunteer their time and who also live here in this town. So we have a vested interest to do the right thing for this town. So paying attention to all these different social media sites that are out there. There is way too much misinformation on there, nonsense, innuendo, and slander. And it's pretty disgusting, to be honest with you.
Hi, Mr. Moderator. I have more questions.
Please, I know you've been up...
Sandra Lighren, 27 Maine.
Thank you.
Okay. So in standard, in C, tract size, I'm wondering where the figures come from? I know there's, you know, whether you have city sewerage and water versus not, and I understand there's differences, but where did the planning board, and I should say thank you for safeguarding and trying to make this much more of a process, but I just want to make sure we're doing enough? So where do those figures come from? Like, why does it have to be 30 acres? Why can't we say 10? I've just seen what these types of development have done in other towns. I know people that live in these townhouses. I have family that works in the trades to tell you the craftsmanship of these townhouses. There are issues. Just drive into Plymouth and see what's happening there. So I would personally like to see more. I would like to see the total land used be less, and I would like to see a cap on how many total developments we could build in our town, whether that's by year or decade or something. But to start, I would like to understand where did those numbers come from?
Great question. Often times when you're sort of late to the party, you take other people's ideas, right? So we looked at a number of other municipalities, bylaws that they've had, that they had on the books. Credit to Mr. Gassper, you know, the initial one for a tract with no sewer and water. The initial number was 50 acres. That got trimmed down to 30, right? So, you know, we looked at other best practices, and we whittled it down, and we even put some, even more safeguards during the process to fit what we feel would be the best protections for the town of Acushnet.
Okay. And is it feasible to amend something like this with total amount in perpetuity, or total amount per year, or decade, or zoning period?
So here's the thing with any bylaw. This would be a new endeavor for us next year at this time. If you felt that this was a colossal failure, it could be repealed, it could be amended, it could be tweaked. Or if we thought it was a success and we felt like we wanted to make it better, we could do that as well, right? But we wanted to start somewhere, and I truly do. I've been doing this for a long time in town. And the issue of housing has been one that's been around for 20, 20 years and then some. 20 years ago, it was about retreat lots, right? It was all about retreat lots, retreat lots, retreat lots. We moved on from that. Again, we have really antiquated zoning in town. That's why you have all these carve-outs, and we have things that you look and say, geez, why is that there? Why do we have an apartment building there, but we don't have an apartment building there? Why do we have a house on that lot and we don't have one there? So we're trying to do our best to modernize what we're doing here in town. But I can promise you, we're doing it in the best interests of the community. We could say no. Could absolutely say no. Stick our head in the sand, and, you know, who knows what the outcome would be? But we're trying to take our best effort to put something before you, but it's always a work in progress. It's not written in blood. It's not written in stone. It can be repealed. It can be tweaked. It can be amended at future town meetings, like we did with the Sola bylaw, right? We put a bylaw in, didn't work. We put a moratorium against it, and then we came back and put even stricter bylaws. So, you know, this is, it's a living, breathing document. Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Selectman Gassman.
55 and older bylaw has been looked at and talked about in the town for several years now, so this is not something that has been rushed. I was super critical of a bylaw that was put in front of the Board of Selectmen, call it, three or four years ago. The bylaw was copied from Rochester. This bylaw is pretty much a duplicate of that, other than we have different districts than Rochester does, so we changed some verbiage there. The last bylaw from the previous building inspector was put in front of the Board of Selectmen, and I laughed at it. It was a pile of garbage, and I refused to have it go in front of a town meeting and have the people of the town embarrassed by it. We brought this bylaw back with the planning board, the new members of the planning board, Mr. Francois, the new chairman of the planning board, Mr. Boucher, Mr. DeVignan from the planning board, new ideas for the town of Acushnet. This bylaw, I have a copy right here in my hand of the Rochester bylaw. I have another copy right here of the town of Acushnet's bylaw. I've been through the bylaw word for word. This bylaw's worked for the town of Rochester for decades. The town of Acushnet actually put in safeguards in place, more safeguards in place than what they've seen in there. Mr. Wona alluded to the 50 acres, so the town of Rochester's bylaw allows them to develop 15 to 50 acres in non-sewer areas. I know it says watered, but non-sewer and non-watered, we go from 10 to 30. In water and sewer district, we go from 3 to 30. You could make it more restrictive and say, we don't want it to go up to 30, to answer your question, Sandra. I've digested this bylaw up and down. I don't think I've spent more time on anything else other than trying to digest this bylaw and look at other communities' bylaws to say, is this a good fit for the town of Acushnet? The Board of Selectmen vetted this bylaw. We made amendments to the bylaw that got sent back to the planning board, and graciously they accepted the amendments from the Board of Selectmen. And I can tell you this right now, having this bylaw on the books is 10 times better than not having a bylaw on the books. If you don't, we don't pass a 55 and older bylaw and have these kind of safeguards in place, we're screwed. Because anybody could come on any size tract of land in this town, all the way down to a half an acre, and go to ZBA, and if they allow it to happen, you can have multiple units sitting right alongside of your house with no say at all in it. And there's no safeguards in place from any of us boards and committees to weigh in on it. This bylaw has a lot of safeguards in place. If you haven't had time to read through it, I can read through some of the safeguards. But I'm going to tell you right now, I'm proud of this bylaw to the fact that I was willing to put it on town meeting floor and put something inside, in place, because we know the mentality of developers and the hunger for our land. And if we don't do at least something, we're going to be screwed. It's bottom line, we're going to be screwed. And you could end up with ugly development. At least this dictates how they develop it. It's going to fit in harmony with the neighborhood. You get public hearings, you got a pre-application hearing, then public hearings, weigh-ins from the boards. I mean, you have plenty of safeguards in place for this bylaw. Is it perfect? Nothing's perfect in the world today, right? So is this a good bylaw for us to start with? Absolutely. It's a great bylaw for us to start with. I'm confident in it. And as I told you, I went word for word and checked, marked everyone that was exactly the same as Rochester's and where we made changes. So I can sit here and go through every word, every paragraph, and let you know where changes were made, what they did and why they did it, why we did it versus why theirs did it. But I don't think you want to sit here for half an hour and have me vet that out. I hope that you would just take my word that I did that homework, and it's a good bylaw. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Diane Abram. I live at 26 Pembroke Avenue. I just have a question on age qualification. It says here, developers shall be owned and rented and also occupied by at least one person 55 years of age or older. Does that mean if you have a child still, an adult, living with you, and you're 55, and you have a 30-year-old unmarried person living with you, can that person also live there? Yes? Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
The one thing that the town of Acushnet also did in our discussions and our back-and-forth with the planning board is we limited the 55 and older to maximum two bedrooms per dwelling unit. Rochester has three bedrooms per dwelling unit. And I scratched my head saying, why would somebody 55 and old need three bedrooms in a unit? So we did, we moved it to two bedrooms, just in case you would happen to have somebody come from out of town, family, friends, or whatever it is, you need to put them up, you can have a place to put them up. Or maybe your significant other kicks you out of the room, you have someplace else to go.
Thanks. Hi. Amy Gordon, 7 Heritage Road. I really do agree that we needed bylaws on the books because there weren't any significant ones. I'm not really opposed to the bylaw, but I think there's something missing. In the explanation, it says the change will provide an opportunity for the development of senior housing without using Chapter 40B. That's correct, right? For those of you that don't know, the Massachusetts law, Chapter 40B program, allows developers to override the local zoning bylaws in order to increase the number of affordable homes in towns like Acushnet where there is less than 10% of the housing as defined as affordable. I think that's the word we're missing. Affordable housing, the town, I don't know what the percentage is actually, so that's my first question. What is the percentage of affordable homes in the town of Acushnet?
So I studied 40B way before I was involved in things in the town of Acushnet. It was decades ago. With a Selectman from the town of Dartmouth, his name was Mr. Miller. He was also a professor at a college. And the one thing that he taught me about 40B is it's not really affordable. And when somebody comes into your town and threatens 40B, there's a gray area in the 40B laws that says this. You can build 40B and come in and make good incentive, but only a percentage of those units have to be affordable. And if you can't sell those units within a certain timeframe, sayonara, you get to sell them for whatever you want. So, you know, we've been fortunate not to have somebody come into our town. I've been involved with certain people in this town that have threatened the town with 40B housing because they cry because they can't get everything that they want. They never did anything with it. But 40B guidelines is, in my opinion, a bunch of crap. The state's guidelines, a bunch of crap, and it's very difficult for a developer to build affordable housing and still come out with a profit. So with that said, we can't sit and wonder why we don't have more affordable housing. We can't control the prices of housing. We can't control greed of individuals, right? I see houses in Acushnet right now, three-bedroom ranches selling for over $400,000. I think that's a joke. No disrespect to anybody that owns one, because happily, I own one, and my whole neighborhood is pretty much three-bedroom, one-bath houses. I don't see how my house would be worth $400,000. I really don't. But so be it. Some people want to spend $400,000 for it. It is what it is. The market will dictate price, not us. Not you, not anybody else. It's the market. Some people are willing to spend that kind of money. I can't justify it. But 40B housing is a joke. You might get some crazy developer to come in and say, I'm going to prove Mr. Gassper wrong, and I'm going to do this and build it. And he might get away with selling those units for way above market price because he exceeded that timeframe, that gray area in the law. Most laws are written with gray area. That's one thing I have learned, especially from the professor. So with that said, our affordable housing is roughly 2%. And the simple reason is the government also doesn't allow mobile home parks to be considered affordable housing.
So just to clarify, this bylaw, as stated, it does not address affordable housing, nor are the over 55 population developments that may come to this town will be affordable. They could be very expensive for people.
Somebody would have to tell me what their guidelines is as far as affordable. What do you consider affordable? Your affordable might not be the same thing as my affordable. So I'm cheap. So my affordable is you're going to sell me that house for $200,000 and you're going to like it. Somebody else is going to come in that builds that house and says, no, Mr. Gassper, that house is $600,000, and you're not buying it because you only have $200,000. There's no such thing as affordable. I hate to say it. I'm a cheap person in general. I work hard for my money, as most of you do, right? We don't want to sit and waste our money. Nothing's affordable. Go to the grocery store, is that affordable anymore? There's nothing affordable anymore. So, you know, I understand, we had a discussion back and forth, planning board, Board of Selectmen, on what is affordable? I don't know what to tell you what is affordable. We can't start dictating price.
What is the Massachusetts guideline for affordable? If they're the ones dictating that there has to be 10% in a town, what is their guideline?
Evening. My name is Mary Martins. I live at 17 Bertrand Way. So I appreciate all your hard work, and I appreciate the bylaws. I agree with everything that's been said here. But a lot of grandparents are raising their grandchildren because of the opioid situation that we have in the fentanyl. And so I know grandmothers that are raising their grandchildren, and they have two bedrooms, and they're putting three kids in one of the bedrooms, and they're sleeping in the other bedroom. So that would be a big burden on our school system, depending on how many units there were, and if this drug trend continues. Have you thought of that?
Yes, we have. And I don't know if the scenarios that you just described, if those people live under HOA or an association where there are safeguards in place, where there... So these developments would be under the legality of a homeowners' association, right? So the reality is, while there may be an outlier that we don't know about, or the developer doesn't know about, I believe there would be safeguards in place to make sure that the people who are living there are in the spirit of the law and the spirit of the bylaw and the spirit of the development and the developer. But I think what you're saying, could it happen? Of course it could. There's always extremes. That could happen, but the likelihood of it turning into a neighbor of grandparents who are raising their grandchildren, I don't know.
Or a grandparent that the daughter can't make it on her own, she moves in with her two kids and...
Ma'am, I'm sure we could think of scenarios like that all the time, right? And I think what you're saying, I'm not discounting it or discrediting it, but the... I would be surprised if you had a scenario where a housing facility just had that. Like, look, we have presidential terrorists in Acushnet here. There are seniors who live there, right? You could say that. Oh, wow, there could be somebody who's living there that has their grandchild living there. I mean, we could always concoct, come up with scenarios like that all day long, but I think that's not the spirit of this. That's not what we're trying to do. And I believe there'd be safeguards in place.
Safeguards in place.
Davis 1528 Main Street, Acushnet, Massachusetts. Thank you for your service. My question is to you all. Has anyone, any developer, or any conversation happened between you, any one of you?
Yes. Yes. During my 20 years, I've had...
Okay, not 20 years.
No. Ma'am, I'm just telling you, over my 20 years here in service in the town, I've had a lot of, lot of people...
Yes or no?
Hold on. Hold on. I've had a lot of people in my ear about, we need to do this, we need to do that, we need to do this, we need to do that. Absolutely. 100%. Hold on, let me just figure, because I know where you're going with this, okay?
No, you don't. Go ahead.
Excuse me. We're getting outside of the scope of the article here.
Mr. Moderator? She asked a question. I think it's important to answer that. Yes, I've had a lot of people talk to me about this, and my answer has been, we're working on a bylaw. If the bylaw works for you, great. If it doesn't, nothing I can do to help you out. We're doing what's in the best interest of the town. But I don't appreciate the innuendo that you're trying to perpetuate based on what's on social media concocted by somebody who doesn't know what they're talking about. So you asked a question, I gave you the answer.
I just have another question. That's whatever you're feeling is your feeling. But what Mary said, I have to piggyback off that because... But what Mary said, I, I have to piggyback off that because that's the reality. We don't live in a lily-white community as we'd like to think that we do, because we know that there is a problem here, right? And 55 and o, I'm 67, by the way, and I know I look good, right? So, hey, so the thing is, right? You're, you're saying 55 and over. The reality is, what she said, that is really going on in our world today. Grandparents are raising grandchildren. So, to say 55 and over, you're opening up a can of worms here. And the other thing is, right? I was at the zoning board meeting with Mr. Francois, and he said, they said, not he said, they said that this would affect the north end of Acushnet, which is mostly farmland. So, we know that there's a lot of landlocked land back there, like, like 300 acres. That's landlocked in Acushnet. So, if you're going to put 55 and over, right, anywhere, right, it better be close to transportation, bus lines, and all of that. So, I don't know where Acushnet, the land or open space that these developments are going to go in, because it was at that. And they said, you know, somebody said that this was going to affect the farmland community. And I'm concerned about open space, and once you rip it apart, this is my point, once you rip it apart and rape the land, it doesn't go back to what it used to be. And I believe in conservation today. Those are my beliefs, and I know there's people in this crowd that believe in the same beliefs that I believe. And I hope you all entertain the thought of small farm communities instead of these housing units.
Ms. Davis, thank you. I'd like to move on to the next speaker.
21 Manchester Lane. Just a couple of questions. Though we mentioned affordable housing defines that, is there anything in the bylaw that prevents...
I'm sorry, is there anything in the bylaw that prevents...
Protect against subsidized housing in this?
Text against it?
Against it, of these developments being subsidized?
Over 55.
And someone, at least one person has to be owner-occupied?
55 or older?
Yep.
By law, owner-occupied or rent.
Or rent. So, the owner passes away, where's that house? 30 years old, 30 years old is living in that.
Can't be there.
After two years, a clause in here for after two years.
Then you get generations of grandchildren that that's will do.
There's a clause.
Mike, in the, yes, under standard, Section 2, age qualification, the event of the death of the qualifying owner-occupant of a unit or foreclosure of the involuntary transfer of a unit in a special residential development, a two-year exemption shall be allowed for the transfer of the unit to another eligible household. Eligible meaning 55 and above.
Two years?
Correct. For the settlement of the estate.
And again, and Mike, again, the, the proponent would have to go before the, the planning board, an arduous process, that those questions would be asked, those questions would be vetted with the developer, those would be addressed at that time. The bylaw creates that process for all of those questions to be addressed.
Mike Pusky, 120 Mendel Road.
Speak up, Mike, I can't hear you.
Sorry. How many retired community members are looking to commute to Boston every day on the T? Also, why the lot size change? Two other questions. Again, like Mike said, what are the safeguards if you do find out? So, Dave, you rented, you're 60, your daughter moves in with you, and she's got six kids, and it's just temporary. How do we, how do we control that? And you roll your eyes and you make faces, but the question is, how do you control it? I've spoken with everyone I can in town. There seems to be no safeguards, and you guys are claiming it's reduced the need on schools and emergency services. Last time I checked, elderly are one of the more frequent users of ambulances and emergency services. Also, if they're bringing in more kids to the schools, I don't see how it's going to reduce our tax burden.
So, the first question, Mike, I can't answer.
Hold on, hold on, I'm still not done. You guys seem to...
Are you asking questions, or are you just making points?
Lots of questions, because you guys have been asked, and you just don't answer. It, it seems like this is such a great idea, and you guys are really pushing it, but it sort of seems like there's not a whole lot of controls in place, and if it's not perfect, what's the rush to move it today? Why not table it and wait a little while and improve these items before we vote on it? Why should we rush it through today? You guys are saying it would stop 40B or low-income housing? I think someone said, what, 2% in town is low-income housing or affordable? So, to, to stop 40B, we'd have to get another 8%? How many homes are there in town? Something like 5,000? So, we're going to add 500 low-income units here to stop 40B? So, it, it sounds like this doesn't actually stop 40B or really stop anything.
Mr. Moderator, just to reiterate, none of us had said, have said stop 40B. We've said deter, which is a big difference.
Okay, but that was like a major push on social media. If we don't do this, they're going to force this on us, I think, is what you specifically said.
I didn't say if we don't do this, they're going to force it.
They could force it on us. So, I, I feel like you guys are throwing this out there, like this is going to solve the problem, but it's, it's not even coming close to addressing it, and when we've asked what's affordable, well, we don't know what's affordable. So, so how does this really address the affordable issue?
It, it doesn't.
So, then what's the big rush to, and, and again, like, what's affordable for elderly? How many elderly are in town looking to sell their house and buy something else or move into something else at the highest interest rates we've ever seen and the highest home prices we've had in...
This is for 55 and older housing.
Yeah.
It's not to address the affordability of it. It's to address 55 and, you're 55 and older.
How much of a demand is there for that?
The demand right now is for a bylaw that protects us from having a developer choose to see four members of a board and just build whatever they want if they can get four people in town on a board to approve it. Right now, like Selectman Gasper and Selectman Warner said earlier, multiple boards, putting orders of conditions on each of these permits, each single case is a special permit. Every single development would need to go in front of multiple boards to get approvals, and if any of the boards involved don't like a part of that project, we can say, no, this can't happen. Right now, they only need to get approval from four out of five members of a board to do it.
How often does this come up, and how often has this happened in the past, that it's such a prevalent threat that we need to really push this through before we discuss it more in depth?
Hey, hey, Mike, so, while it might be convenient to talk about pushing it through and rushing it and coming up with all of these sort of false narratives, the reality is, as Mr. Gasper said, this has been something that's been talked about for quite some time, probably predating you moving into town, so this isn't a new phenomenon.
How long has it been talked about, then?
Like, I've, like I said, I've been, people have been talking about it to me for 20, 20-plus years, 20-plus years, okay?
Why has nothing happened on it, and in 20 years, how are these developers not...
Again, so, let's talk about the current conditions. The state's in a housing crisis. We have the T, okay?
We don't have the T. New Bedford has the T.
Okay, all right, Mike, all right, Mike, are we going to do this all night? Are we going to go back and forth?
I don't know. We keep asking questions.
You know what, we're a T community.
You guys don't answer any of the questions.
Excuse me, folks.
Ask me a question, and I'll try to give you an answer. So, I've heard you ramble, I've heard you ramble for five minutes straight.
We are, we are getting beyond the scope of the article. Please limit your comments and questions.
Specifically what Rick Ellis said.
The attribute of the lack thereof of approving a 55 bylaw amendment. I don't want to hear any more of these what-ifs and how-about.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
And I, I just want to address the gentleman at the podium. I, I just, I just want to address...
You keep asking, we went to the planning board. We asked questions. You guys just talked right through us. You didn't, we said, what's affordable? Well, we don't have to define that.
Well, that's, that's what I'm trying to address with you. I guess your name is Mike. So, Mike, you got up to the podium, and you said, you guys, and then you bundled me with everybody else that you made to have conversations with and saying that you guys said it's not going to have any impact on schools, and you guys, it ain't going to have any impact on firing EMS. Those words never came out of my mouth, my friend.
I didn't say you specifically.
You said you guys, and most people in this room are going to think that that was a conversation. So, the, the reality of it is...
Okay, folks. Mike, I, I don't recall your last name.
Yeah.
This back-and-forth conversation is going to end. You've been up there long enough. If you have any comments, you should address them to me.
It's right in the, it's right in the language you put, to reduce demand on emergency services, et cetera, et cetera, and help tax. How does this do any of those things?
Can you, can you ask that question again, sir?
So, in all the meetings and all the questions, it's been to reduce the burden on emergency services or town services. How does this do any of those things?
I can't answer that question because I didn't make that comment, sir.
Understood.
So, whoever made that comment, I would, I would guess that they could come to the podium if they're in the audience or up here, that they could make that comment, that it would reduce the I guess, services from firing EMS. I would never make that comment. So, if somebody made that comment, I don't know why that comment was made, Mike, but it surely wasn't from me, and I know it wasn't made at a board of selectmen's meeting. So, you might have heard it from a planning board meeting or somewhere else, but it wasn't...
Oh, excuse me, excuse me. Mike, do you have any, you have one last question?
Nope, that's it. I'm all set.
Other people would like to speak.
Dave Dvignan, 33 Ansel White Drive. I'm also a member of the planning board. When the bylaw was first presented, he is a planning board member. It came from the Board of Selectmen. I've endorsed this from the beginning because what it does is replace an existing one-line bylaw. The woman who came up and talked about grandparents raising their kids, I have people in my family like that. I, I know exactly what she's talking about. But I think, you know, I look at this, it's very black and white to me. That what she's describing can happen tomorrow or next month, whenever a project's approved by the Board of Appeals, not the Planning Board, under the current bylaw. If you turn to page 31 real quick, and you look at the top of the page, it has a summary of the bylaw that was being proposed tonight. All the, that criteria doesn't exist now. For instance, the woman who came up on Heritage Lane, I believe, there's a lot at the end of your development currently that's a retreat lot. And I think it's something like 28 acres. Pretty big. This bylaw prohibits that person from developing their lot because it's a retreat lot. We made it, we put in there that you got to have 150 feet of frontage, which is the requirement for a buildable lot in this town. The three acres to 30 acres. That's if you have sewer and water. Currently, I'm just going to give you real quick, I'm not going to take all night here, but under the bylaw, if somebody has three acres and they have sewer and they have water, the maximum units they can put on there, if they have three acres of upland, nine units. Under the current bylaw, the developer can come in, and he can have three acres, and one acre could be wetland, and he could build on just the two acres, and he could build up to 18, 1,100 square foot, one- or two-bedroom units. Those are facts, because the only thing that's going to limit him to 18 units are what the bylaws say now. And what the bylaws say now is you have a 15% floor area ratio and a 25% impervious lot coverage. That means that for every acre, he can turn it into 10,000 square feet of impervious surface. That's what we have for bylaw now, then, there's no oversight. There's no boards that'll look at it unless you fall within conservation jurisdiction, then you'll have to get a permit from them, but you don't, they don't have to go to the fire chief, the police chief, the, the sewer commissioner, water, it doesn't matter. They'll get what they want as long as they comply with the bylaws, and I just told you what the bylaws say. So, this comprehensive bylaw replaces something that is so basic and archaic, it's, it's, you know, there's nothing to it, one sentence. Look it up. It's, it's actually right in the bylaws that, you know, the, the first paragraph. So, all of us pushing it through, we're fools if we don't push it through. I'm making it clear to you right now. Let's not vote it in, and don't be surprised if somebody right next door to you, which has a 20,000-square-foot lot, comes in and wants to put four or five units on it, because under the current bylaw, they can do that. Thank you.
Number two, no one else is here, Sandra Lighren, again, 27 Main. I've listened to you all. I am with you that we need to strengthen this bylaw. I'm now concerned that perhaps we need a different bylaw about other types of development. It is this easy for someone to come into town. May I suggest a friendly amendment, given the spirit that you said many boards will have to look at this? If you look at page 28 in Section D3, where we go through the reporting, it ends with failure of other boards or agencies to make a written recommendation or submit a written report within 60 days of receipt of the application shall be deemed a lack of opposition. I would like to see more accountability there, so I suggest a friendly amendment to change that language of the bylaw to boards or agencies will make a written recommendation or submit a written report within 60 days of receipt of the application, period. All boards have to report out yea or nay. I would like that to be a friendly amendment that you can then speak to. I'd make a motion for that friendly amendment of what I...
Sharon Klein through the moderator. So, I understand what you're suggesting, but obviously, the bylaw is full of lots of requirements and rules. The reality is sometimes they don't occur for whatever reason. So, this is sort of, is dealing with the result when that timeline is not met. So, the question would be, you can change, if the bylaw was changed to what you are suggesting, well, then what would happen in the occasion when the 60-day deadline is not met?
Point of information, what is the selectmen's role in making sure boards do their job?
But, no, but I understand, I understand that.
Sandra, you tell me.
Things happen. Pandemics happen. Emergencies happen.
I'm still making the friendly amendment.
No, no, I'm, I'm, but I'm just suggesting, like, you know, people get sick. Things, there's a lot of reasons that occur where maybe a deadline is not met. So, this is dealing with that eventuality. Nobody's recommending that they not meet their deadlines, but it's providing
I understand.
a, a result.
It's too loose for me personally. We can put it to 90 days. We can, someone else can friendly amend the friendly amendment if it passes to have an out clause, but this, to me, gives boards permission to not weigh in, and if what I'm hearing is, look at all the checks and balances, that's the escape clause. And so, I would like to see that be a friendly amendment to change that, that, that will be done, not the opposite.
So, just so you know, if, if it changes that way, somebody could argue that if it's not met, the opposite will occur. It's a constructive approval. You may actually be accomplishing the exact opposite of what you're hoping, meaning that if the deadline is not met, an applicant may argue that that's constructively approved. So, it may not be accomplishing what you're hoping.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Gasper.
Hi, Sandy, how are you?
I'm trying to figure it out, what time is it?
It's actually, it was, it's, it's a good idea, and, and this is one of the ones that I was kind of a stickler on, so we, the Board of Selectmen, did amend what the Rochester bylaw says is 35 days, and we amended it to 60 days. We thought 35 was too short, and the planning board agreed with that, and they, and they went with the Board of Selectmen's amendment. One of the things that wasn't in that bylaw is, it says the planning board shall transmit, and then it says plans shall be approved by the police chief and fire chief for satisfactory emergency access and facilities. This review may result in requirements for additional facilities such as reserve water tanks, emergency communications, et cetera. Then to your statement, the failure of other boards. However, there's a whole new paragraph that we added in, kind of hence me, because I was a little aggravated about certain things. It says, second paragraph under 3 in reports, it says, plans shall be approved, not may, so shall be approved is different language, approved by the Water and Sewer Commissioners for satisfactory design and access to current water and sewer infrastructure and facilities. A narrative report detailing the impact of the proposed project on the town's existing water and sewer capacity and infrastructure, including any planned or recommended upgrades shall accompany the plans. This review may result in the requirements for installation of additional infrastructure or facilities at the applicant's expense, which means developer's expense, right? So, that wasn't in the original bylaw, but that was something that I was adamant about. Again, this is something that we have looked at in past years. I was dissatisfied with it. The town took action and said, it's time for us to do this. Mr. Davignon actually just got to the podium and spoke about someone could go to Zoning Board of Appeals and build four units at 1,100 square feet in a 20,000 parcel of land. Just so everybody's aware of in this room, that did happen recently through the zoning board. Board of Appeals, and it's off Hawes and Garfield Street. So not saying anything bad about it, I'm just saying it actually did happen, and that could continue happening on small parcels of land. At least, this bylaw identifies you need three or greater in a municipal water and sewer area, 10 or greater when you move outside of that area. So in respect to the other woman that got up about the farmland and the tract of land that's landlocked, it's a good point. I hate seeing farmland gone, too. I happen to be raised alongside of White's Dairy my entire life. I'm still there today, 55 years in running, okay? I've seen a lot of farmland in this community go bye-bye to housing. It's a shame, but again, we can't dictate to people what they do with their land, you know? We'd rather have guidelines, something as far as guidelines go, so that you can't get what Mr. DeVignan talked about, is some yahoo that may own 20 or 30, or perhaps looks at people that do own and seek, you know, onto the elderly that happen to own this land, and somebody goes in and says, "Hey, Mr. and Mrs. Jones, I'll give you $500,000 for your 30 acres or 40 acres," and the next thing you know, they could do whatever they want, and they put in 200 units on that amount of land. You can't do that with this bylaw. There's guidelines, and that's why, after seeing what I've seen with development in my town, I think, in our town, I should say, I do say my town a lot, just because I've been here for so long, our town, I think it's time that we put something in place to try to protect our open space and our land. Is this gonna do it all the way? No. As Mr. Wonner said, we've had a bylaw, a solar bylaw, probably waited a little to planning board, probably waited a little bit too long. We got new members on the planning board, they took action, they created a better, stronger bylaw. It was a long time, you know, just recently, but it's been a long time since that bylaw. We got a lot of solar fields taking up a lot of our forestry and cutting down trees, right? I think this is a really good starting point. Could we make it more restrictive? Yeah. Do you wanna make it so restrictive? Because I looked at it from my perspective, I was looking at that, and that's why we changed 50 to 30 acres. I could, we could make it a lot more restrictive, so that it doesn't appeal to anybody to do it, but then we don't have the objective of having a 55 and older bylaw, and having somebody that is willing to come in and build something for 55 and older, as Mr. Wonner said, so we can get rid of our houses. So our population, we are all pretty much, except for Mr. Hinckley, Mr. Wonner and I are pretty much similar age, we're hitting that 55, not saying this is being done for to selectmen, because it's not. My family home is a family home, so I'll own that until the day I die, more than likely, and my son will end up being there, even if I decide to take off out of state. Regardless of that, we need 55 and older, and it would be nice, as Mr. Wonner said, as at some point, we reach a tipping point where we don't wanna deal with maintenance, we don't wanna do with roof repairs and things of the like, right? We might pay $500 HOA fee every month and say, "Not my problem when a hurricane blows through and my roof comes off, that's being done by the association," right? We see it all over the place. I mean, you look at the state of Florida, they got them everywhere, right? It's not something that's not been done other places. Rochester's got them, David's got an exorbitant amount of it being built. You just talked about it, and I get the whole thing about developers building cheaply to make a profit. We have a planning board that's in place now. I feel a lot more comfortable with our current planning board now. They're much more concerned about the residents of the Town of Acushnet than what we've seen in the past. So let's, you know, we give them a chance, and they got, they got a way of putting order of conditions on things, and it's gotta be, we also put in here, it's gotta be recorded on the Registry of Deeds, covenants and things of the like. So once they put order of conditions in place, it's stuck with that deed.
If I'm understanding, the board, Planning Board has to give it the go, Water and Sewer has to weigh in on it, Police Chief and Fire Chief have to weigh in on it, but it's Conservation Commission, assessors, historic district, Building Commissioner, maybe don't.
So the Building Commissioner would absolutely have to weigh on it, because he's the one that issues the permit, right?
Okay.
The building permit. So that one is, Conservation, they always do their job, they have to weigh on it, they're the rulemakers of the Wetlands Protection Act, right? So the Conservation plays a critical role in the Town of Acushnet as well.
But that's who would fall under the failure clause.
The assessors pretty much just give property maps and things of the like, they're not, you know, the enforcers of anything, really, they're just property maps and descriptions of properties and saying, "Yeah, you got that much land, and yeah, that much land belongs to that developer and that parcel, and this is the ID number to move forward to the planning board for whoever wants to develop their property or for the developer comes in to purchase property." That's the only time assessors would weigh in, so that's not, you know, hypocritical to...
Okay, then I'll withdraw my friendly amendment. Thank you.
I was in East 30 South Main Street. Just to clarify, on a project like this, it would be disturbing more than 40,000 square feet, so it would go in front of some, some moderate in the Conservation Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, folks, time to vote. Excuse me. This will need a two-thirds majority to pass. Article 12, it's to amend the over 55 bylaw amendment. All those in favor, raise your card. Those opposed? I declare this passes by two-thirds with opposition. Amendment, Article 13, amendment to the sewer assessment bylaw. See if the town will vote to amend Article 10, the sewer assessment bylaw, of the general bylaws by deleting the stricken language in red from the present bylaw and by inserting the highlighted language in bold red as shown in the handout, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Article 10, the sewer assessment bylaw of the general bylaws by deleting the stricken language in stricken red from the present bylaw and by inserting the highlighted language in bold red as printed in the warrant. Do you have a second?
Second. Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee voted to approve this article unanimously.
Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I make a friendly motion to amend Article 13 Sewer Assessment Bylaw, Section 5, Time of Assessment, Letter B, change Article 7 to read Article 8.
The friendly amendment as submitted on Article 13, Section 5, Time of Assessment, would be to the letter B, change Article, Roman numeral 7, to read Article 8.
It was just a typographical error.
This one, see, it says Article, what it says, says Article 7. Watch, C7's betterment.
I see what's up there, man.
8 is sewer connection improvement.
Section 7, that one.
Yeah.
It's something I've learned, hold on.
Section 7.
For a second?
Second.
5B. I was changing this, it says, this says, 5B, this says 7, in connection...
There's a second time.
Already confirmed this with Baratowski.
So that means we have two.
Two typos, there's another one.
Those were typos, folks, that are gonna be corrected.
It's a numbering issue. It's just a numbering issue within the bylaw that was done, that's all it is.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, real quick for the town meeting voters, this establishes a connection privilege fee, which hasn't been on the books of the Town of Acushnet for decades, hasn't ever been on the books for, and right now, people that are sewer users in a betterment area, you pay whatever the betterment is. Right now, the current betterment is $14,500. Somebody that's right around the corner that wants to tie in, if they weren't subject to that betterment, they would pay, tie in for $675. What this allows the board, technically, and by law, it should have been done a long time ago, it allows the board to establish a fee for that connection slash privilege fee that's never been derived before. So that's what this basically, bylaw amendment does, is establishes a connection fee so that it makes it more equitable.
That, to explain further, that friendly amendment was to correct some typographical errors in the article itself.
To be specific, the friendly amendment that's been accepted is to correct, and to correct any numbering issues in the bylaw amendment.
Okay, is there any other discussion? We'll put it to a vote. This is gonna need a two-thirds vote to pass. All those in favor of Article 13? Those opposed?
Thank you.
Article 13 passes unanimously. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the board or official having custody for the purposes of which it is presently held to the Board of Selectmen for general municipal purposes, including the purpose of sale, care, custody and control of the land and buildings known as the Russell Memorial Library. It authorizes the Board of Selectmen to convey the said land and conditions, and for such consideration, the Board of Selectmen deems appropriate, may include reuse restrictions, minimum purchase amounts, and utilize the RFP process, request for proposal pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30B, or any other lawful process for disposition or take any other action thereon. This will authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell the Russell Memorial Library as is. Also enables them to identify any reuse restrictions, historical considerations, and proposal submission requirements and terms and conditions for the sale. This RFP process involves multiple advertisements and public evaluation of the proposal. So I have a motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from the board or official having custody for the purposes of which it is presently held to the Board of Selectmen for general municipal purposes, including the purpose of sale, the care, custody and control of the land and the building thereon known as the Russell Memorial Library, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey said land and building and improvements thereon, or any portion thereof on such terms and conditions and for such consideration as the Board of Selectmen deems appropriate, which may include reuse restrictions and minimum purchase amounts, and to utilize the RFP process pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30B, or any other lawful process for disposition thereon.
Well, I have a second.
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommend this article unanimously.
Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, just to let the residents know, we have acquired $25,000 from the state to put towards a feasibility study for reuse of this, to put towards the RFP process, so we can make sure that the Russell Memorial Library, no matter where it goes, we have control on what goes there, rather than just getting rid of it, and we like to keep some historical facade going for it, so it'll be put to good use the right way.
Thank you. Any further discussion? This will take a two-thirds vote to approve. All those in favor, raise your card. Article 14 passes unanimously. Article 15, see if the town will vote to transfer from the board or official having custody for the purposes of which currently held the tax title custodian to the Board of Selectmen for general municipal purposes, including the purpose of sale, care, custody and control of selected town-owned parcels of land under 20,000 square feet, and to authorize the board to convey said parcels separately or in combination, or any portion thereof on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deems appropriate, which may include reuse restrictions, minimum purchase amounts, and to utilize the RFP process pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30B, or take any other lawful process for disposition or taking any action thereon. This will authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell individual town-owned lots separately or in combination as is. It will enable them to identify any reuse restrictions, proposal submission requirements and terms and conditions for sale contract. The RFP process involves notice to abutting property owners, multiple ads and multiple evaluation of proposals. So I have a motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from the board or official having custody for the purposes of which it is presently held, including the tax title custodian to the Board of Selectmen for general municipal purposes, including the purpose of sale, the care, custody and control of selected town-owned parcels of under 20,000 square feet, provided that the Board of Selectmen shall select those parcels by their vote within the following year, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey said parcels separately or in combination or any portion thereof on such terms and conditions and for such consideration as the Board of Selectmen deems appropriate, which may include reuse restrictions and minimum purchase amounts, and to utilize the RFP process pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30B, or any other lawful process for disposition therein. Two-thirds vote.
Did I hear a second?
Yes.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee voted to approve this article unanimously.
Discussion.
Gary Rockliff, 74 Mcaway. Is it just tax title land, specifically lots that are lots, or some of this paper streets? I just, no, it's just lots that we've already taken by tax title? And it's all gonna be less than 20,000 square feet? Like the big chunk of land off of Perkins Lane, Snort and Jeopardy, and, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. Again, this will take a two-thirds majority. All those in favor? Those opposed? Article 15 passes unanimously. Article 16, we're almost there, folks. See if the town will vote to approve by funding the necessary cost items contained in the initial years of a memorandum of agreement that amends the three-year collective bargaining agreement between the American Federation, State, County and Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 851, for the time period July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2025, and that the town appropriate funds if necessary, and/or confirm the use of previous appropriations therefrom, or take any other action thereon. This will amend the existing collective bargaining agreement among four district subunits, the clerical employees of the town, Unit A, library technicians, Unit B, custodians and maintenance employees, Unit C, and dispatchers, Unit D. The subunits have different provisions, and they relate to following contract articles, eight out of 34. Paid holidays based on the days of week, hours of work, overtime based on hours of work, clothing, longevity, miscellaneous provisions for clothing, and severe weather closing. In the past, county union drafted memorandums of understanding dealing with... In the past, county union drafted memorandums of understanding dealing with these differences. Rather than deal with it annually, the parties are seeking to establish a master schedule within the agreement. In addition, there's a market adjustment of public safety dispatches that reflects state The CBA expires on June 30, 2025. Is there a motion?
Moderator, I move that town vote fund by confirming the use of previous appropriations previously designated for such purposes and approved, and necessary amended items contained in the initial years of the memorandum of agreement that amends the three-year bargaining agreement between the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 851, July 1, 2022 to June 30.
I have a second.
Second.
Finance committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommended this article unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, just, just to make it clear, there's no funding source that's needed
Any further discussion? Put it to a vote. This is a majority vote only. All those in favor of Article 16? Those opposed? Article 16 passes unanimously. Article 17, see if the town will vote to approve by funding the initial years of a three-year collective bargaining agreement, July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2024, between Teem's Local 59 and the town, and the town appropriate funds if necessary, and/or confirm the use of previous appropriations therefrom, or take any other action thereon. As of the posting of this warrant, the new collective bargaining agreement is continuing to be negotiated, and that has not been concluded. Therefore, this article will be passed over. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article 17 be postponed indefinitely.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? A majority vote. All those in favor of postponing indefinitely? Those opposed? Article 17 passes unanimously. Article 18, see if the town will vote to approve by funding the initial years of a three-year collective bargaining agreement between the steelworkers and the town. The town appropriate funds if necessary, and/or confirm the use of previous appropriations therefrom, or take any other action thereon. Again, as the posting of this warrant, the new bargaining agreement hasn't been reached, this article will be passed over. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that Article 18 be postponed indefinitely.
Second.
Any discussion? Majority vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Article 18 passes unanimously. Having no further business, do I have a motion to dissolve? Meeting dissolved.